We'll go ahead and call the March 21st, 2022 council meeting to order. Roll call.
Crainer.
President.
McConnell.
President.
Fortune.
Here.
Buska?
Yes.
Herman.
Present.
First we have is to act on the consent agenda. That would include the approval of the agenda, the approval of the claims, and approval from minutes from March 7th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Amy and Jan.
Carmen.
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Crainer?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is staff reports. We'll start with public works.
We had a water main break last Wednesday after we had said we hadn't had one for quite a while. It was between the Casey's driveway and Fisk's. They had Skyline come here last Thursday to repair it. And then Blazek was here last week to start that grit classifier project. They're hoping to finish up today. And they were hoping to get with Marachik's Plumbing and Heating to do the startup later this week. Hopefully that's done by the end of the week. And then the street guys have started sweeping the streets and they'll soon be out doing puddles as well. So, so like that.
Okay. Next is police.
To report this week, well, first of all, we had several candidates come and test for us on Saturday. We never done the two that we interviewed. So after some reference checks and whatnot, we'll feel pretty confident in who we're going to ask to be an officer for the department.
Okay.
I don't know if any of you guys have been aware of a Facebook post that was put on reference the Cresco Police Department, the United States Postal Service, and a dog. Well, it's an issue right now that is being handled. It's actually been put on the desk of the city attorney for review. So we're just waiting for him to look it over and give us some advice on what to do with a certain animal in this town.
Okay.
A dog is attacking a postage carrier?
Well, there's been some allegations. So we're just trying to get that resolved. And then I would also like to go ahead and maybe look at some of the other cities, what their ordinances are in regards to pet ownership and responsibilities of pet owners, and see if maybe there's some updates that we could do.
Okay.
That's all I have, sure.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Administration.
Reminder that we're going out for bids right now for the airport drainage project. And those bids are due March 31st. And so at the next meeting on April 4th, we will have the public hearing and review the, and hopefully award a contract for that. Housing rehab, they are having open houses on the last two houses in that project on March 25th. And that bid letting is April 11th here at City Hall. So hopefully we'll get some contractors to bid on those two houses and we can finish those up. Howard County Community Foundation grants. We applied for six grants for, we requested $34,000 from six different departments. We were awarded three of them. The theater for $6,300 for new PA system and microphones, the lavalier, or whatever they call them. The fire department was awarded $4,000 for, to go towards their handheld radio project. That's going to be a much bigger project. It's about $14,000. So with this $4,000 grant, and we were awarded the DNR grant of $3,000. And the firefighters have committed to putting $7,000 into it, which leaves the city's portion to be around 7,300. So at least we got half of it paid for by other departments. And then the police applied for active shooter vests and they were awarded their full $3,000. So these are better vests than what we supply. So it's a little bit different for an active shooter incident. Hopefully we never have to use them. But, so that was pretty good. We got $13,319 back for the grants awards. And then included in your packet are the financial statements for February.
For the community foundation grants, I know a few years ago I went to that where they handed those out. Do they not do that anymore?
Yeah, they do. So if you want to, I'll get the date. It's in Lime Springs. So I'll get the date for you. It's in the letter. I give that to each of the three departments. And I know Wendy is going to accept hers for the theater. And then sometimes the police do. I'm not sure if they've committed yet. And oftentimes there's a fireman there too. But if any of the council wants to go, that'd be great. I think it's a great showing that shows how appreciative we are of it.
It's interesting to go.
I'll send the date out to everybody if anybody's interested.
This is in Lime Springs, you said?
Yep.
How is that money generated that they give out?
So the Howard County Community Foundation, so it's like a state funded thing, but then within the state, there's these different groups. So this is all Howard County. So it's where you can go in and you can donate to that. A lot of estates will have donated to it. And so they have a pot of money in there. And then every year they open it up for grant applications. And so there's a board that awards these grants.
Doesn't some of it also come to the counties that don't have gambling in them? Doesn't some amount of the gambling revenue get allocated to the counties without gambling?
Okay. I didn't know that. But Jason is agreeing with you.
That is actually correct. Majority of the funds do come from the gambling.
Oh, really?
And then as Michelle said, they allow for certain ones to be donated and stuff like that. But I would say majority of those funds is all gambling revenue, which is why you're not alone. Many people got denied this year because gambling revenue was cut in half from the previous year just from COVID. So you just didn't have that quantity of funds that were sitting there that normally were there. I think we went 0 for 4. So feel good at going, what'd you say, 4 for 6?
3 out of 6, so.
3 for 6, that's pretty good.
It's still not as good as having a boat.
That's true.
Okay.
Thank you, Jason.
Any comments from the audience?
Didn't we skip committee updates?
Oh, no, we did.
Oh, sorry. Committee updates. Sorry.
I actually had a, not a meeting of the Theater Commission, but I've got a ton of notes from updates that they shared at it. They had the Looney Lutherans a couple of weeks ago. They had 266 tickets sold for that show. And after expenses, they netted $6,250. That helps offset some of the costs of, you know, overhead and expenses. It was really interesting though, because they said that it brought a lot of people who had never been to the theater before, people as far as Osage, Charles City, Ashen, Decorah. And they were in awe of, they didn't know that the theater even was in Cresco and didn't realize that there was live theater and things going on as often as we're having it now with the promotions that have been going on. The other thing was April 24th is the date for the Luther Opera to come to Cresco. They've decided that ticket prices will be $5 for high school and under, and adults will be $10. There was a lot of talk about ticket prices and how to manage that since it's kind of an upscale type of performance. But in order to gain some community involvement and to get some exposure, they decided to keep the ticket prices where they were. Cricket paid $2,500 for the, the cost of that. And then they also applied for a tourism grant. The Cricket request was asking for a repayment of part of that money based off of whatever the ticket sales may have been. But that's a really huge thing to be coming to our community because this group, I guess, apparently goes everywhere. And then a really big news is Discovery Plus has requested to come to our theater to hunt for ghosts because we're apparently haunted. So at that point in time, the commission is looking to, after Discovery Plus comes in with the obvious attention that we'll gain from that, increase the rental rates for the paranormal activity explorers. I don't know. But yeah, there's, there's a lot of really neat things going on and continue to grow within our community with the theater, so.
Discovery Plus, is that the TV channel?
I don't know if that's the TV channel or if that's the streaming. I think that's the streaming, but I'm not 100% sure.
But it's same company?
Same company, yeah. So this is, this is going to be a huge exposure, not only for the theater, but for Cresco too. Because they'll be shooting for multiple days on end. And they haven't, I don't believe that they've asked for anything. They just want to come in and shoot. And with the exposure that we're gaining out of it, the commission has decided to waive that small fee because it, it's not really a staffed event. It'll shut down the theater for two days while they do their exploration and fact finding and whatnot. And then they'll broadcast it over their network, which, that ought to be huge, so.
We could hide Nate in there maybe in heaven.
Well, there is the crawl space in the balcony. We could go in there and make some noise.
Oh, cool.
Did you see when that was, Alex?
I do not have that wrote down in my notes, but.
Cool. All right.
The Regional Housing Authority, which most people know as Section 8 Housing Met. And there was a lot of what I loosely call administrative stuff. Jason is the chair of the board. The two big news, pieces of news is that the Upper Explorer Land is moving from Postville to Decorah. And so I think it's the first week in April that they're going to be kind of shut down. And so the other thing that people always look is how many ports do we have? These are people who get on the Section 8 list here in Upper Explorer Land's regional area and then move back someplace else because the rules, this is federal money, say we have to continue to pay for them after they move to New York. They have to be here for a year. But then they move back to New York or Chicago or Minneapolis where the waiting list is 34 years long. Our waiting list is no place close to that. And we pay for it. And right now the ports are down to nine, which is really good news. Jason says as long as it's in single digits. But they keep trying to get New York and Chicago and Minneapolis to take them. And they go, we know the rules. And the other group that met was Howard County Housing Committee. And I didn't think that was very much exciting at that meeting. Was there something, Jason, that I?
Anybody else?
We had a fitness meeting, fitness committee meeting in which a lot was discussed on the pickleball. They wanted to go ahead with bids. I basically said, well, we had to begin with Nate first because I said, I think he should be part of that down there. So that was one discussion. A lot of it too is remember they're supposed to be getting equipment from the high school, which now I think is kind of on hold because of all the expenses generated from the high school that they're over budget, that they might be keeping some of that equipment now all of a sudden. And then they talked about their committee setting up to, you know, to do what they want for the, you know, the fitness center and what they want to move ahead on. So, and then, you know, Jason's here. I mean, the chamber, you'd probably tell better than that.
Okay. Anybody else? Committee updates. Okay. Now comments from the audience.
So yeah, Rich, as we did have a CIC meeting this past month. At CIC, we were able to process another loan fund for Good Times. You guys have noticed he's going like crazy. Just met with John again today and he said, there's so much activity. He goes, I'm in the way. I gotta get out of there. So thank God for that moving forward. So yeah, we had CIC this past, past month. We have our banquet set in stone. I just got an email back today from Ashley Hinson staffer, who said we are at 95% good to go on May 5th. She goes, I'll get you 99% by the end of the week. I said, I'll take it. I know you can't be 100% when you're dealing with a congresswoman, but we'll take 99 and roll with our banquet, so. I'll let you know exactly when we decide to do this. It all depends on the menu. So McAllister's going to cater it for us. But depending on what we have, we may do it there and he's okay with that. Or we'll do it at the expo, one of the two. But that's where we'll be, that'll be May 5th. So when we get all that set, I will email all of you an invitation. And hopefully you can make it. That's the night we do those awards with the Times Plane Dealer, the Community Champion Awards, if you want to call it that. We've got a new award this year. They're looking at doing a educator of the year. So we have those. Do a quick state of economic development. I'm real short. And then introduce Ashley and do that. And I've asked if she can hand around afterwards for photos and stuff like that. So that's what we've got set for the Howard County Business and Tourism Banquet on the 5th of May. Coming up real quick is the Iowa Wrestling Hall of Fame Banquet, which is set for April 11th. So we've got four inductees going in there. That's the first time in two years since we've done that one. So should be good there. Awesome numbers. I heard that about the Looney Lutherans. I think the Dinner Theater is a total sellout. We had to go steal the last remaining tickets from Banking Trust today. So the Dinner Theater, which is April 1st and 2nd. If you haven't got your tickets yet and you thought you were going, you better call our office tomorrow because I think we got the last one sitting there Friday night. I think we ended up getting four more tickets from Banking Trust. And we've got maybe about 10 or 15 for Saturday night. So that looks great. And that will be at the Heritage Event Center. And they're serving steak and shrimp as your meal. So you can't go wrong there. Plus from what Smith says, absolutely hilarious. I do have to give a shout out, like you mentioned, Alex. The number of events we are hearing, I mean, we know because we see it every day. But what Wendy's put out there, we're hearing now the back talk from the community saying, this is unbelievable. We got this. And even on that same night, on that Saturday night, if you've gone to the Dinner Theater on Friday night, Johnny Cash is at the theater on Saturday night on the 2nd. And then Elvis has come in May 7th, you know? So it's just really ramping us up into what looks to be a busy as usual spring and summer with all kinds of events, all the town festivals that are occurring. And we will be looking to do all of our family fun nights. So we're hoping to do three of those. Probably right now with earmarks, heavy city participation, we hope, with the Parks Department. So we've talked to, talked to them and looking at our first one being the middle of May, probably that Wednesday night, like the, it's like the 18th or something like that, and doing it at the Fitness Center. And try to do kind of a last hurrah. I've asked them to kind of pull together so that we can get some public in there, maybe have a free night, or free day, and then promote what we're looking at as far as grandiose visions there. You know, fundraising is occurring and we hit on something there. Doing something like that, bringing in a new, a new portable zoo. It's called the Rad Zoo. It's reptile and amphibians discovery zoo. So just confirm with them so you get to hold a big scale. Maybe a salamander can call it. So anyways, doing that. And then looking maybe later in the year, depending on where things go with your pickleball, maybe looking at doing something down at Evans in July or something like that with, with kind of a family fun night down there. So, you know, we bring all the bouncy houses. We try to provide all the entertainment for free. And then we just try to get a food truck or two to come there to provide for food and just allow kids to run around and have fun and not worry about a dollar here and dollar there. So that's about all. And then I'll go over other stuff when we get to our agenda.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? If not, we'll move on to item one, and that is motion to set public hearing to approve the capital improvement plan.
So our next meeting?
April 4.
April 4?
5:30.
5:30, all right.
Second.
Amy, second.
Fortune?
Yes.
Crainer?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
And Buska?
Yes.
Next we have the resolution authorizing signers on depository accounts.
So moved.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Crainer?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Number three, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a 28E agreement with Howard County Business and Tourism.
Moved.
Do you want to talk about that a sec? Sorry.
I can, real quick, just so that we're all on the same page and, you know, some of you guys have been here for a while and some are new. Just so we're, we're all on the same page as what, what that means, Howard County Business and Tourism. So that's what you call our office. That's how we answer the phone. That was set up actually right before I got here. That's what brought me here. That and this lady nonstop asking me left and right. But Howard County Business and Tourism was the umbrella organization that was created to house CIC, the Cresco Industrial Development Corporation, house the Cresco Area Chamber of Congress, and house Howard County Economic Development. And a dozen years ago, you would have two different directors and another entity coming before you asking for individual monies. And you probably remember that better than I did, Michelle. And so what we tried to do is create the umbrella organization to say, we all need to pull in the same direction. We're all under the same roof. But as you well know, even if you don't have multiple names, it's not always easy to get your whole team pulling in the same way. But that was the goal. And that's what we did. And that's why we created Howard County Business and Tourism. So we make an agreement, you're making an agreement with us as Howard County Business and Tourism. That's what we've done this. And our other businesses that support the organization or support multiple organizations, that's what they do also. So our, our two banks donate funds to help us out on multiple fronts like that. Our utility companies, Alliant, MyEnergy, those guys do that, Black Hills. These guys all donate funds to Howard County Business and Tourism. And then we distribute them. So all you gotta do is write one check and then we put it in the proper three accounts that we have that sit out there. The goal was to make it easier on those folks that are partners of ours. Make it easier on the people trying to keep track of it all. But honestly, the one challenge that I've always told people is I said, you know, we'll, we'll put our mission statements for all these organizations together. Put them into a hat. I'll take out what they actually say. And you pull it out and then you tell me what organization that goes to. It'll be hard to rest to do it because the missions are all the same. It's about helping businesses, it's about helping individuals, it's about networking, it's about engagement, it's about all that stuff that I put in the 28E agreement, by the way. I didn't have to look too far. It was all our mission statements. So hopefully that, that verbiage is okay. There's nothing magical. We R and D that one like crazy, rip off and duplicate. Some, some attorney created it and we just, we just take it from there and make it our own. So that's pretty much what it is. When I go around to other communities and I'm here more often than I'm at any other city council, obviously. But you guys give more money than they do too. But just because we have a lot more projects going on. We have different things that are going on. But one of the highlights that I, that I give them yearly or two or three times a year when I go, talk about the amount of loan funds that we've done every year. If you come to our bank, you'll hear the same stuff. But this past year, 2021, we loaned out just shy, a hundred dollars shy of $260,000 in revolving loan funds, just in 2021 alone. So that's a pretty good number, I always think. And every year I'm thinking, we won't get that this next year. It'll come down. And then it stays there. Then it stays there. And every year I'm like, I say the same thing. Now I gotta adjust it. I used to say there's three quarters of a million dollars in circulation out there with our businesses in Howard County. I have to adjust that now. We're up to $800,000 that are currently being used by our businesses through our loan funds that we've been able to put out there. So it, it makes a difference. I mean, when you put it that way, that's, that's pushing a million dollars that we're getting close to putting out there at the low interest loans that we do with our businesses in either a business acquisition, which we've seen a lot of lately, which again, for all of us is better than the alternative of just approaching burnout, locking the door and shutting the lights off and walking away. Because that's real hard, as we know. We've still got some of those that have done that. Chinese restaurant being number one. When that happens, that's real hard now. It's easier to keep the lights on and transition another. So we do a lot of that. So this year, that $260,000, or last year, that 260, these are real numbers. That's 13 new jobs and another 24 jobs that were retained. So I don't inflate those. Those are what we look at on the applications. You get around much, you'll see those numbers through the state and through USDA. You know, they pad this, they multiply this and all kinds of stuff there. These are the real numbers. I'm not going to hide them. They are what they are. This past year was a huge year for grants. We ended up writing a ton of grants and we got awarded over $600,000 in grant funds. I try not to say that too loud because, man, they're labor intensive, as you guys well know. I'd love to be able to do our, you know, I wish all the grants were as easy as our hotel tourism grants. Two questions, write some paragraphs, tell us who, what, where, and how, and make it that way. The state of Iowa, when you go through grants.gov, holy cow, it's, it's labor intensive. But this last year was pretty good. I'm not going to have as good a report this year because I already know we're 0 for 4 on community foundation grants. But, you know, for us, the workload doesn't change whether you get awarded or not. It's the same amount of work that went into it. So sometimes that's a little bit misleading, especially when I look at it from a staff perspective. The two employees that we have, so I put the same amount of time to take a shot, take a swing at the plate. And then last thing I put on here is that Tourism in Howard County alone, and Smith serves on our state board, she actually serves on the Eastern Iowa Tourism Board. So they had asked her one time, I said, if you're going to be the token rural aspect of it, go ahead, go for it. That was like six years ago. And she loves it and she's a good voice for rural Iowa on that board. So she's got all the data. But in 2021, we saw over $106,000 growth, a 9% growth in Tourism over the last decade. So it, it's getting better, but it could be a lot more. And Iowa in general is like that. Iowa in general is like that. There's a lot of things that a lot of people would come to Iowa to do tourism related. We don't necessarily put a lot of effort and promotion and marketing in that. So we try to do that from our office as best we can. And then last thing, I guess, too, we talked a little bit about, we've done this already at one of our Howard County Economic Development meetings. But we have established a new housing loan fund. Talked to you guys about that. Hopefully we'll have productive ARP money talks with the county. Now, your money went towards water and sewer projects because you got a ton of them. The county doesn't have water and sewer projects. They don't own water and sewer. So their amount of, or their funds are still sitting there. They helped a huge, huge chunk out with basically saving country wins to the tune of $200,000 so that we didn't lose that. Now hopefully we're turning that around. And the assisted living, the MUMD Center is opening back up. We've already got some residents that are moving in there. So that was a great use of money, but we're still looking at 1.5, I think, is what they have left. And so we're going to make some asks and hopefully they'll be receptive to those to, you know, put a decent amount in our housing. Because I'd like to really be able to use that with developers. And like we do with our businesses, share the risk on development projects. I do not want to loan money to people that own houses. We have banks that do that. That's perfect. That's a 30-year note. Let them have it. I want to do stuff where we chase developers around and create more housing. Gets paid off in a year and a half. We do it again. We do it again. I think helping share that load with a developer could make a difference. Allows them to maybe take that, just that little bit more step of a risk. Because, you know, we don't want to go back to where we were in '08 and '09 and '10 and be building half a million dollar spec homes. That's where we got really undercut. But it's okay to build some workforce housing spec homes. I think we can fill those in a heartbeat. So that's a long answer to a 28E agreement that's in front of you just as the state auditor wants us to agree to. Questions? Comments, concerns? You guys always know how to get me, so. All right.
Okay.
All right, I'll second that.
Rich made the motion and Jan second to approve?
McConnell?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
And Crainer?
Yes.
Number four, motion to extend the winter adjustment for a credit on water and sewer bills for customers running water to prevent service lines from freezing.
So we had originally had it expire on March 20th. February, yeah, March 20th. And they just took the water temperature again today. It's at 38.8 degrees. So we would really like to extend it through, I think it originally expired February 20th.
Correct.
So we need to extend it tonight to March 20th. And I would even go to April 20th. I know it's getting warmer outside, but what happens is the frost goes deeper before it comes out. And so it may actually get colder for some of these people that have the water lines that do freeze. So we don't have very many. I put the report in the packet. There aren't that many that are running it. And as it gets warmer and their temperature starts going up, they'll stop running it. But I would recommend extending it until April 20th. Let me read again.
So will.
Second.
Amy and Alex?
Kreener.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Fortune.
Yes.
Buska.
Yes.
and Carmen.
Yes.
Number five, discuss request for City of Cresco jackets for Public Works Department.
Do you have a cost on it?
Two and a, it was, it's in there, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you wanna fill us in on that? Or Michelle?
So the Public Works Department, like we buy the fluorescent green jackets, like winter coats. Right now, that's all that we've ever supplied, besides their uniforms that we will pay for the laundering on. But they were looking for, especially this time of the year, of trying to buy some of the fluorescent hooded sweatshirts, basically, that are the fluorescent and then have our logo so that when they are dealing with the public, they've got something showing that they work for the city. And it would be the fluorescent. They got a quote from O'Henry's for $47 for each one. The letter requested five for the street, two for the water, and three for the sewer department. I think that Public Works Director should be added to that list if you do approve it because he's out in public as well. So totally up to you if you want to do this or not.
The employees requested this, or department heads?
Yep. The, the employees, the Public Works employees.
Okay, so it's something that's gonna be worn or not?
Right.
That was my first question.
Laying on the, on the seat of a vehicle or hung in a shop somewhere?
Yep. Yeah, because right now we offer them vests, but they want something that they can throw on, like a coat, like, like you have on there.
Yep.
You know, this time of year, they're, it's still chilly.
Yep.
And they want something that's gonna identify them. You know, a vest is just a vest, which they can still wear those during the summer.
Okay.
So.
Because the shirts we provide are not reflective?
For the street department.
They are for the street department only?
Yep. They're the only ones that have the uniforms.
The sewer and water opt not to.
Right.
Use the city laundering shirts. So this, this would be more of a jacket than.
And they're required to be reflective any time they're on the road or working?
Correct.
Okay.
I would be in favor of it.
I, I'd vote for it, but I would note that I think you can put the vest on over your own hoodie, right? I mean, you could put one on over your.
Oh, yeah.
The vests have no lettering or anything?
No, they're just plain reflective vests.
I mean, I just, I, I think it would, I sympathize. It's, today's nice, but tomorrow's not gonna be.
Right.
So I'd make that motion. Or did you make that motion? Kind of, yeah. Okay, second.
Do you wanna make the motion?
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
Carmen.
Yes.
Buska.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Kreener.
Yes.
and Fortune.
Yes.
And that would, so that would be 11 of them, add the Public Works Director? Okay.
I guess one question we didn't ask, is this gonna be a yearly thing? Or is this gonna be, we expect, what, two years out of a jacket, or?
I would expect that. I wouldn't say it would be a yearly thing. We don't replenish vests yearly, but that, I mean, it all depends on what kind of situation they get into as well. You know, there's gonna be times when they're down in a hole and it gets destroyed. So what we do in that case, I don't really know.
Jesus, they have to give you.
They take pretty good care of their winter coats.
Correct.
We don't replace those very often. So I assume they will take care of these.
Yeah.
Well, and of course, we would expect to see them wear them.
Absolutely. Yep, I will make that very well known.
Not tomorrow necessarily.
All right. Number six, discuss proposal for installation of curb and gutter on a portion of the north side of Fifth Avenue.
I understand what they're proposing, but there's more to Fifth Avenue west of this.
Yes.
What are we gonna do about that?
We have actually discussed that as well. I will probably talk to Jamie Rusted, who owns that property, and see if he's willing to get on with this project and do a cost share, just like me, Rich is proposing here. I haven't had a chance to. I did some talking with our attorney at Dallas and Cooney. She gave us some real good advice. So I have stuff to approach Jamie with. So, but I think this is a great, great idea, because Jamie has had some complaints with the runoff and drainage into his yard. So if he's on board with it, then that would be fantastic.
So one thing to point out is a curb and gutter project is an assessable project, like what Pat Callahan was talking about. And so when something is assessed, like we're gonna do downtown, when we do the curb and gutter down there, we're going to, the city will pay for 50%, and the property owner has to pay for 50% of it. So this proposal goes right along with our normal assessments, where they would pay for 50% of it. City would pay for the other 50%. Now, if Rusted voluntarily just goes along with this, then we can just write up a little contract, he's gonna pay his 50%. We don't have to do any of the legal assessment stuff. If he decides he does not want to be a part of it, we have two choices. We could still assess it, but then we have to go through the whole process, a public hearing, pay the legal fees and all that kinds of stuff. Or we stop at the end of the BDM property, which would not be ideal. But right now, tonight, we will just be committing to going to the end of the BDM property until the next property is willing to enter into a contract with us.
So we wouldn't go all the way to the Country Club Road, all the way to?
Correct. Initially.
Right, that's where he lives at.
He's only down the north side?
Yeah, Rusteds live right there at Vernon Road and Fifth Avenue.
Yeah, right over there.
Yep, and then, then the rest of it's BDM to the east.
So we only have two property owners to deal with for a whole block?
Right.
From one road.
But I'm trying to understand, only one side though? We wouldn't do both sides?
Well, I mean, if you drive down by there, two, I would say two-thirds of that block on the south side is either driveway approach or something like that. And on the south side, there is actually a drainage ditch on that side currently. I mean, not saying in the future, if we decide to redo that road, we wouldn't look at something then, but I, I don't feel it's necessary in this case.
None of that has to be, the road doesn't have to be raised or lowered or anything?
No.
I mean, in the current state that it's in, we can just go in and lay the curb and however much concrete out?
Right.
Kind of what we've done, like with all the rest of the areas up in our area, that was curb and gutter. And then that's.
And that was assessed too.
And that was assessed onto their tax rules, they get so many years to pay it, and this would be the same?
Well, in this case, they have to pay it in one lump. We can't offer to add it to the property tax and pay over 10 years without going through the whole assessment project. So that, that would be the downfall if Rusted does not want to do it. But in this case, BDM is willing to pay it upfront or.
Right.
So it wouldn't be an issue to get it to the end of their property.
Yeah.
And we're not talking, I think the whole project was around $23,000?
Yeah, $22,000 from Vernon Road to Third Street, the entire length of the block on the north side.
Would be the total cost or half the cost?
Total.
That's the total.
Yeah.
So then, so we're looking at probably only $11,000 total, if Rusted does his portion too.
So that's a sealed code.
I think it would be a wonderful.
It is, it is. And the street department, it wasn't last year, it might've been the summer before, just reshaped that whole street. It was pretty rough before. So they went in and reshaped it all, and then seal code or chip sealed it last summer. So.
And so you're comfortable we're not gonna get into what we did on Eighth Street East, which is where, this was before I moved here. Apparently, they put the streets in curb and gutter, and somehow they weren't shaped right. And people's driveways had to be redone and all of that stuff. I think, didn't they, didn't they have to go back to WHKS and have it looked at?
I'm unaware of that, I guess.
No, apparently it was a real mess.
True.
So I guess I'd wanna make sure that.
Eighth Street.
Eighth Street East.
Well, and you have to remember, there's two property owners to deal with, and one of them is all their own driveways. So they're going to shape them correctly.
Yeah.
So all we have to do is make sure Rusted's.
But there was something also wrong with the shape of the street.
Sure. Like the crown was too high or something?
Yeah, or something. As I said, I heard about it from Rod.
Sure.
That there was a big mess. So I guess I would wanna make sure that everything is huckadore before, so that we don't run into that.
Right.
What, we're looking at, what, eight units in there, seven units?
There'll be six on that side. So there's six already up, and then they're building another six.
Six, okay. And then isn't it the original, our plans to put another row on the, on the west side, or is that?
They, they had talked about that, but I'm not sure if that's still their plan or not.
Okay.
I'm not sure if they can make that work. Because they put that, they put that drainage basin.
Say the drainage.
Okay.
On the west side there. So I'm not sure if they can fit another set in there or not. So I know they had talked about just having the backside between the two buildings, just a common area, but plans changed, so.
And these are units that go right on the tax assessments quickly?
Right.
And these are not eligible for tax abatement. So we get 100% of the property tax. Do you need a motion on that? I'll make that motion.
Second. Amy and Rich?
Fortune.
Yes.
Kreener.
Yes.
Carmen.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Buska.
Yes.
Number seven, discuss proposed pickleball project and possible motion to proceed with the city and donor committees.
So I forwarded some emails that kind of came in after I sent the project out. So they have raised $80,000. The pickleball group has secured, I would say, $80,000. We think the project will cost around $110,000. They are working at getting another $40,000, I believe, from the email, from other donors. And they are still waiting to hear from, Wellmark, Boo Cross, Bushield had a grant that they will hear in April if they got that. That was for $25,000. So fingers crossed if they were to get that, plus the 80 that they've already raised, we're at 105. So the question becomes, because we're talking a hundred and some thousand dollar project, the city is required to go out for public bidding if it's over $54,000. So if Cricket, right now, all of the funds are being run through Cricket. So if Cricket were to do this project and the city were not involved, and the city were not to put any money into the project, we could possibly get by without going through all the public bidding process. Now, the bidding, when it's public bidding, that means you have to hire an engineer. The engineer has to draw up the plans and the specs. They have to follow all of the bid bonds and all that stuff that is required for public bonds, public bidding process. So my first question is, do you think you're gonna raise all the funds and the city would not have to pitch in? We don't know.
Yeah.
They could stop, stall right here at $80,000, and all of a sudden, the cities have to kick in $30,000, $40,000. So the question is, do we risk it and not go out for the public bidding process? Run it all through Cricket, and the city will not be able to put any money towards the project? We cannot pay Cricket. This 2080 agreement and all that stuff, the state is cracking down. Cities cannot give nonprofits any money. So we cannot contribute to the project if we don't make it a city project. So then the other thing is Cricket then gives the city all the donations that they receive. It becomes a city project. We hire the engineers, we do the bidding process, like you're supposed to, and then the whole project's run through the city. And that way, if the pickleball group comes up short, I need to know, is the city going to fund it? Are we gonna set a limit? Do we need to require them to have so much literally in hand before we go out for bids? I mean, where do you wanna go with this?
So you have, you have an illustration or a drawing in the packet, correct? And there were how many courts?
There's four pickleball courts. And then they suggested leaving.
Tennis, one tennis, right?
I'm sorry?
One tennis court.
Right, leaving half of it as a tennis court, but perhaps make it more multi-user, where they'd put a couple basketball hoops on there. So you could have like two half-court basketball, outside basketball courts, kind of utilizing that same one, because we don't think the tennis court gets used enough to justify paying for that asphalt. It's not quite wide enough to add two more pickleball courts, you know, to make eight courts. You could take the tennis court out and add two more pickleball courts, and you'd have six pickleball courts with no tennis court as an option. But as part of one of their grants, I think it was a $20,000 grant, we are required to have them legal, legal-sized pickleball courts and with the fencing around each one of them. That is a requirement of the grant. So we can't like make them a little bit smaller and cheat on that part of it. So if we wanna keep that tennis court on that other path. So basically, the way I understand it is they only have to add like 10 feet to the north. Otherwise, I believe it's okay width-wise. So we understand.
But the city would have to pay for the engineer while it would become part of the project.
I think on the last street project, was it 15% on the street project that WHKS got?
But they did, they did kind of what I would hope they would kind of do here when we did our concrete projects, because of the fire station was over $60,000, we had to go through this process. And I believe we only paid them about $8,000 for all of those concrete projects, which city hall, library, sidewalk, and fire station. So I don't believe the engineering. I asked them and they, I didn't get a straight answer.
Sure.
But I don't, I believe between $5,000 and $10,000 would probably pay for the engineering. So probably at least $5,000.
I think there's gonna be changing on lighting though, too, right?
I would think so.
Yes.
But with that concrete project, the only thing that the engineers really did was send the bidding stuff out. I did most of the mapping and everything else for those projects. So I don't know what they would all entail here, I have no idea, but just so you're aware of that, that they didn't have much of the planning side of it.
And I kind of foresee that here, too.
Right, I would as well.
And if we don't have them coming and inspecting and stuff like that, that's where your costs get really high is when they're coming and inspecting the projects, which we need on Waters or Street. This I kind of pick, put in the same category as our parking lot and our sidewalk project.
Do we have money in the current budget or next year's budget for pickleball? We do?
We've, we put local option sales tax, we said $30,000.
Right. In this budget we're in now or the next one?
The 23, the one that starts in July.
And that $30,000 isn't included in the money they've raised at all?
No. We have not really shared that as a real commitment.
Oh.
That was just what we budgeted, kind of as a downfall.
We would still have to approve it.
You have to remember when we say 105, 110,000, there's going to be extras. They're going to, they're going to, we're going to need landscaping. You know, there's always all that extra stuff beyond the fundraising project. And you have to keep in mind, we will be maintaining this because probably the donations will not come in when it's time to re-surface it.
I think it has to be, go ahead.
I think it has to be a city project. I do. Because I think you're, when you're talking 80,000 and you put 30, that, you know, man, we say we have, it's 110. You know, like you said, there's always extra costs, landscaping and everything.
Would it be an option for them to use $80,000 and build two pickleball courts versus four?
I don't know if they would get that full grant then. That grant was specifically for these four regulations.
And how much was that grant?
I believe it was 20,000.
Okay.
I think, remember when we were down there, we were talking about that one thing that kind of floats around and comes to these courts that this 20,000 was under a certain, the way it was built.
I was going to say, I think there's some regulations with that money and.
There's that much support. I mean, we got this group coming, but obviously if it's going to have to be used, probably going to be used at night, you're going to have to put lighting in it too, correct?
There is some lighting.
Some lighting.
And this is, this is the parking lot currently.
Tennis courts down at Evans Park.
Okay.
I'm with Rich. I think it has to be a city project, but maybe not for the same reason. I just think it's kind of, it's our land. We should take some responsibility for it and make sure that we're okay with everything.
And I know one of the concerns is the pickleball group didn't want to go to all the work of collecting all the money and then lose the say in it. So I think if we say we want to make it a committee, a city project, but let's invite the pickleball people to be the committee to oversee it. But yet, we have some say in it too. So the problem I have with Cricket, I just, I'm not sure on how all the funding gets tracked and everything through Cricket. I know I have lots of checks and balances here. We just want to make sure donors' money is going to what it's supposed to go to. I'm assuming everything would be tracked at Cricket. I just, I don't know. I just kind of feel, I can't see any reason to run it through Cricket except to avoid the bidding process and that just doesn't feel right to me.
I agree. Do we need to make a decision tonight on?
I think we do because they really want to keep moving on it.
They wanted to go out with bids.
We've got one quote in just so that we could kind of get some real good numbers. And they already said that if you're going to do it this summer, you have to lock in soon because I think it's like the net polls are really hard to get. I mean, it's one stupid thing, but that's the way all projects are now. So the sooner that we keep moving forward with it. So if we're going to do the bidding process, I think you should tell, we need to contact WHKS tomorrow. We need to move as fast as we can on it so that the next meeting, because you're already looking at probably a month. And the quote we got is only good for 30 days. So if we go through the bidding process, that quote will probably be thrown out and I don't know if it'll go up.
You got, Nate, you went out and talked to some of the asphalt people. Isn't that going to be about the largest part of this, is the preparation and the asphalt for the courts themselves?
I would assume so.
And the painting.
Right. That was going to say the painting's going to be expensive as well.
Much way more than I thought.
Yeah.
My concern would be going forward with the asphalt. You know, obviously we got to get, I know you talked to Heartland. You know, we got to get two bids, but with this oil going up the way it is, I see that asphalt price, you know,
Right.
20, 30, 40% higher than what originally was quoted.
Because I get, I did give them five or six companies to reach out to get quotes from.
Okay.
The pickleball group did say they were having trouble because they really wanted to stay a little more local even than Heartland. But when they asked for quotes, nobody'd even give them quotes. And part of it, I think, is nobody knows what prices are going to be.
Yeah.
And so they had a hard time. This was the only company that even replied to them. They did try to get some prices from some other places. So that was good to hear.
Maybe it's an official bid. That might be different, too.
Right. And that's what they said. If the city is asking, may, people may respond. You know, this is a group of volunteers that some contractors may just say, I'm not wasting my time. I'm doing a bid that's never going to happen.
So was, any, did you make a motion or not yet?
I will. I'll make that a motion.
To, to go through WHKS.
Yeah.
It's kind of the, it's limited bidding processes. We can do as fast as we can do it.
It's a city project.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that's what my motion is. Actually, you kind of made the motion and I seconded.
And then.
It's a city project and it's whatever that entails.
Okay.
And then we'll have a committee with pickleball volunteers.
But we're not committed if this thing, if the prices, for whatever reason, are sky high, are we still?
So what happens with the bidding process is, well, just like next week, we have our public hearing for that airport drainage project. So we're going to see all the bids and that night, if the bids are too high, we reject all the bids. So because we're committing to this part, we self-pay the engineering fee, but we wouldn't have to commit to the whole project.
You answered my question.
I guess the other question is how much the city is willing to put towards it? And what if they're short? Are we going to fund everything? You know, we had that marquee where they came up short on their fundraising. The city fronted it and then it took us several years to collect back the money. So I guess we just kind of have to decide, are we, if we put 30,000 towards it, is that 30,000 not expected to be paid back? I would love to have a maintenance fund because I don't know how often you have to paint those lines or replace nets, but I'm sure there's going to be quite a bit of maintenance on keeping this.
Don't they have to recote that every asphalt driveway?
The asphalt would be good for quite some time. It's not that high use.
Right.
So how do we want to term the?
30,000 or whatever. I mean, the amount we say we're going to give, right?
Would we say that tonight or wouldn't have to, or we should? I guess that's up to the motion, too, so.
I guess we can wait until the bids come in and make it that night. But I guess if we know we're committing 30,000, let's do it. I don't know.
The other hope, too, would be that they end up with that Blue Cross, Wellmark grant. And if they ended up with that, they may not need that 30,000, which we could set, we could set aside for a maintenance fund later down the road. But if we commit $30,000 right now to it, then whether it's maintenance or it's going towards the general, the general build of the pickleball courts, we, that way we have, we have it covered one way or another.
Because what I, the way I budgeted it was through the Park Trust Fund. And so if we do have money left over, then remember in June, we always commit our fund balances. So we could commit a cert, whatever's left over for pickleball maintenance. So that money is committed and the council would have to do a resolution to change the purpose of it. So if donors or anybody's worried that the city's going to use this money they're raising, we can commit it to pickleball.
That brings to mind, too, with the past bleacher project, that was on our website and things like that where people could donate right from the website. I don't think the pickleball has got that far yet, has it?
Uh-uh. They're, they're right now, I think, I don't know that any cash has changed hands as much as our pledges right now because they, we haven't officially said.
Sure.
How we're going forward with it, so.
So tonight, we could make the motion and include dollar amount or not? Maybe it would be best if we did.
Right, whichever.
Include a dollar amount?
Up to 30,000, for instance.
Yep. Cap it at that.
What do you think about that, Rich?
Yeah.
I mean.
We're committing 30. I mean, that's of the project, that's a third almost.
And there's that much?
I'd modify my second.
So why don't we, why don't you make the motion if you want to?
Okay. I'll make the motion.
And?
We're going to cap it at 30,000 and it's a city project.
Okay.
Okay. And then Amy, Suck it.
Any other questions on that? Okay.
Busca?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Okay. Number eight, update on recycling, new garbage and recycling carts.
They have been, Harkes Centration has started receiving the carts. So they are in the process of assembling them right now. Once they get enough assembled, they're going to start delivering them to the customers. So I sent you a copy of the insert we're going to put in our water bills so that people understand when all of a sudden this thing ends up at the end of your driveway. So what's happening is they're going to go and they're going to deliver all these carts and they're going to put it where you need to put it each day. So wherever they place your cart means that's where they need it to lift it up and dump it. The increase in the price on their water or on their garbage bills will happen after they've delivered all of the carts. So this may take a couple of months before we see the price increase. But we, I think you're going to be seeing some delivery pretty soon and usage of them, so.
I'll just comment that if that's what that was supposed to say, I didn't get that out of that at all. I think they need to be a lot clearer. They have to say, where we put it is where we want you to put it.
They just added that after we'd already done it, the letter or the note. So that's why I said it out loud.
It needs to be in bigger letters. There's a lot of stuff. I, I just didn't get that.
So, yeah, we'll probably have mercy do an article on the stuff on it. So, yeah, to get that, that was added and then, yeah, I think we tried to get it added. Yeah. It was kind of a mess.
You guys went through this before I joined here, but is the recycling center still going to be open for drop-off and walk-in? And all that's going to go on?
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions on?
That's a really interesting tour, too. If you should ask them for a tour.
Yep. Any other questions on that? Number nine, discuss rate increases for July 1 of 2022.
So we have to set water and sewer rates by ordinance. And so to change an ordinance takes three council meetings. So I need some guidance as to what we want to do for rate increases so that we can get those done here. The first meeting in May is the episode last time that I can do it because we'll start reading meters on June 20th. So, so I just put this out here. We don't have to decide tonight, but we really need to start thinking about what we want to do for rate increases. Amy has suggested that we add another charge to, and I don't know what the name of it would be, but basically like a vacant house charge. So it'd be a charge for having the infrastructure maintained. So the property, like empty houses that are not, that don't have water and sewer on right now, would get a monthly fee. So of course, we think of how to process it. A couple of issues that we have is there's no incentive to pay it because we can't shut the water off to collect their bills. So collecting will be an issue, but we should be able to assess that to the property tax once a year and collect it with the property taxes. The other issue is getting addresses for the property and the owners of these vacant locations. But, but other than that, I mean, I guess it's a council decision if that's something you'd want to do. And then usually what happens for snowbirds when they leave in the fall, if they, some people leave their water on all winter and they just get charged the minimum bill all winter long. Others have us shut it off at the curb. And so they pay $10 to have us come and shut it off and then they get absolutely no bill until they return in April. And then we charge them $10, turn it back on and then their bill starts up again. So during that time, that would be a question you guys would have to answer would be, should those snowbirds be paying this vacant house charge because we still have to maintain that water and sewer even though they're not using it at that point? So just some things to consider.
So my thought process is they're not, say there's a vacant house and somebody sells it and now somebody comes to live in it. They assume they've got water and sewer, so, but they haven't been paying to maintain the water and sewer for the 10 years or whatever that the house has been vacant. And I just don't think that's fair to the rest of us. And I would actually structure it so that I wouldn't add a charge. I would make the minimum charge lower and add a capital maintenance charge so that all of us who own our houses and live in them would not see a change at all.
That's what I, right.
Yeah.
So this would only be charged to the vacant houses?
No, it'd be charged to everyone, but now my minimum water bill is lower and your, and, sorry, I can't point at you, but your minimum water bill is lower, but you've got a capital maintenance charge on it. So it's not like we're charging it just to the vacant houses. We're charging it.
So that would be on top of the capital maintenance charge that we're already charging for 350?
Yeah. That's just capital improvements. I'd call it capital maintenance, but I'm not wedded to any particular. So I don't want to increase the rest of the town's water bill. I just want it to be fair. Now, the question about the ag land, and somebody came to me and said, well, okay, I bought the lot next to my house and I'm not going to build on it. It's just going to be our lot. Do I have to pay it over there? And I said, don't know. Got to figure it out. But then somebody else said, was that you, Jason, that said, well, why don't you just have it replanted so it's one lot? But I just think the current situation is unfair because they're going to sell that land or that house and they're going to assume that they've got water and sewer and they haven't paid for it the whole time.
How many empty houses do we have in town, would you guess?
Gosh, I don't know. What do you think, Jason?
We would have just been looking at the bad, bad ones.
Right, right.
Looking at the empties. They're well count.
Mm-hmm. I honestly don't know what number.
I don't think it's super high.
25?
Our, our number of the bad ones was down to less than 20.
Right.
So throw another 20 and maybe we're at 40.
Yeah, and I don't even know if I'd go that high, but.
That might be high.
Right. Okay.
You've probably got a lot more than that to Amy's point of the vacant lots. And we've talked about that in our housing committee meetings, that that's an issue. And that's stall in development. But your lineal feat, water, sewer, streets don't change. And so I bought a lot next door that never gets anything but land tax on it. The city loses that. The city loses that. And every rural community has that exact same problem.
And I would just comment, I look at the water and sewer departments and, okay, depending on how you count, like in the sewer department, they've got, their big expenses are probably wages and pipes and electricity or something like that. They're going to pay the wages anyway. The only incremental thing, you're going to use less electricity if, if somebody uses less sewer and maybe less chemicals, but we don't spend hardly any money on chemicals. In both cases, I would say something on the order of 85% of the costs are not related to usage. They're just related to keeping people on staff and keeping it running and keeping it repaired. And these people aren't paying any of that. And I think they should. And I, and I want to give them an incentive to build on there.
Is that something we can just start doing?
It's just a charge, just like, had it kind of talked about, like a storm sewer utility or something.
But this isn't a storm sewer utility.
No.
So if I understand this, what you're talking about, like you have an extra lot next to your house, okay? And I just have a garage there, but I'd be paying a sewer charge even though I don't have no sewer going to a garage?
Is that platted in one, I, I mean, these are things we have to work out.
That's what has to be worked out.
We have to work, the intent would not be for that.
Yeah, because I don't think I would be that crazy about that. I mean, if I built a garage and it's an extra lot and then I'm going to hit it with a sewer charge.
But if you've got the next door lot without a garage on it and you're waiting to sell it to somebody, then I think you should pay for it.
Yes, then I would agree.
But even if it's a separate garage, he's got a garage, it isn't going to be taxed hardly when we could have a house on it instead. So why are you giving him a better deal for the garage than a vacant lot? You know, so I'm just being devil's advocate.
Those are the things we have, I don't know.
If you look in town, there's a lot of people that just have an extra, you know, they have a garage. They bought the lot.
And maybe it doesn't work, but I just drive by and Jason knows the house I drive by. I get mad every time I drive by. It's been empty since I moved here in 2006.
My, I can tell you the one I'm on is, what is it, 609 West Second Avenue? My mother and dad have been 20 or 35 years and I've never been to anybody in that house.
Do we have to decide both at the same time, the water increase and sewer increase, or water sewer increase and then the something like?
So I guess the bigger question would be if we would want to add that to the ordinance. We could have it as a fee. Otherwise, we can add it later. We just have to do another ordinance change. Or, you know, we could work out all the details of it and not implement it until a future time or something like that, but.
It may take us a couple of months to think of all of the issues. Issues.
I agree. It's, it's something to keep discussing.
You're talking about properties though, too. I mean, there's a lot of lots out there that don't have a water shot off Valvano.
Correct.
And you're, you're basically. And you're, you're basically, your concern is these that we're maintaining that got water shut off valves on that lot?
No.
Every lot.
Not necessarily it has a water shut off it. That would be, well.
I'm open to, to thinking about. I, I mean, my first concern is that stinking house there.
Because I don't know if we would know empty lots if there's a one there that shut off under there.
The empty houses would probably be first and foremost.
Right.
Would you agree?
Yeah.
Yep.
And, and we just think, we need to think about it. And until we start thinking about it, we don't know the answer to the question.
Yep.
These suburbs, you know, probably does have it stubbed that way with the, it could be buried under the ground, you know? So out by you, they probably do all have it. In the heart of town, tough to say. Tough to say where they're at. It depends on your records that you would have.
Right. And I would even go on to say is I would bet that a vast majority of the vacant lots where there was a house still has that shut off there. I mean, they're required to cut the sewer back, obviously, and cap that.
Yep.
So, I mean, technically that service is still there, but just hasn't been used in who knows how long. So I would venture to bet that vast majority of the lots in town, that our vacant still have a water service and everything else.
Well, it's all food for thought then. So we could put this on the agenda next month?
So are you guys all good with thinking about rates, thinking about this discussion? And then, uh, once we set our rates, we need to set the rate for the Cresco Food Technology. Like I suggested, I would double the rate increase for Cresco Food Technology. They're paying quite a bit less than the rest of the city and they're the ones causing the most issues, so.
Are they the biggest user of sewer?
Yes.
Biggest sewer and water usage, too?
Uh, they don't, not sure on the water. They're the only ones that we meter their sewer discharge. Everybody else, their water and sewer are the same. So, um, I, quite honestly, I didn't look at their water. I just concentrated on their sewer. Right now, just to give you an idea, they're paying $7.92 per thousand gallons and everybody else is paying $9.19.
Yeah, that has to be uniform across the board?
So they're the only one in town getting the benefit.
That's all they should.
So just something else to think about when you're thinking about.
Okay. Michelle, when we go through and we do our, we do our rate change, but then we do our, our sewer agreement for the commercial sewer agreement with them, is it feasible for us as a municipality to have them sit down with us and explain to us what they're going to do about these 2:00 AM dumps that they seem to be having where it's an accident, but it's continuously happening and they're just paying the fine and shrugging their shoulders and they say they have a course of action, but nothing's happening and it's obviously causing the city harm and costing the taxpayers and the, you know, an absorbent amount of money.
I could definitely reach out and ask them to attend the council meeting.
Because it, with this.
So I will say they, I'm going to try to request it, one of the two April meetings for them to be at.
With, with it continuing to happen at 2:00 AM, I, obviously they can't control their own people and it's costing the taxpayers money. It's not really being a good neighbor, good community steward. I mean, we could go ahead and pull that contract and they would have to go into their own septic style system or whatever. That would cost them a lot of money, but we can't continue to bear that burden, uh, the taxpayers can't continue to bear that burden, especially that on top of other things. I know it brings jobs to the community and everything else, but it, what is it doing to us when people come to our town and they smell it? And now our taxpayers are having to take, take care of an oops that continues to happen on a third shift, well?
Well, that's when they're doing a dump because usually what happens is their system is full, which I would know quite a bit of.
Yeah.
And then you have to do a dump because if you're going to continue running, you have to dump the sewer or the CIP or whatever they're doing. So it's out of spec. It's rotating through tanks and all of a sudden, usually at nights you're doing your CIP cleaning. So basically for them to continue going, they have to do a dump and they're out of spec and they know they're out of spec, but they'll do it.
And if, if they continue to do that, that's irresponsible on their part. And again, to, to have the taxpayers pay that burden or, or you worse yet have a spill that would kill off the bacteria out at the plant or otherwise and pollute everything up that's not.
You think a letter was saying they're doubling their rates and they're going to attend the next meeting?
But, yeah, but here's the deal. I mean, we also have to abide by strict DNR EPA rules as well. I mean, if they keep sending us these slugs that are constantly sending our DOs down to zero, it's not going to be good for our bugs.
No, because you are out of spec then.
Right. So it puts us out of compliance with the DNR and EPA. It's just a vicious cycle. So it's just, it's happened more than I'd like to admit in the last two months.
Are the fines too small?
Some of them are, according to our contract, we can't fine for it.
Why can't we fine?
There's certain parameters in that contract. If you read and say pH has to be under or over for five minutes, but under 15, then it's this amount. If it's over 15, then it's this amount. And some of the stuff that they send down, like this vinegar that they're producing right now, it's buffered, so they won't get a pH violation. And they, they don't know that they're leaking it, but it slams our DOs down to zero at the sewer plant.
And these are DNR guidelines that they're supposedly?
Absolutely. We have DNR permits and everything else that tells us what our parameters can be.
We know what our parameters are, but they know.
They're, they're kind of incorporated into our permit, I do believe.
So we can add some of this.
Right.
So what I'll do is I'll send the agreement out to you as well when they're, before they come. So make sure you read through that before they attend.
I will need a translation from me.
One thing I'd like.
I was going to say, I, it's above my head, but.
I'd like to bring up here, too, is that I've had two texts just sitting here tonight. Wind must be out of the south. Uh, where, before I joined here, there was some discussion, they put up 100 foot tall and simple observation, I've never seen anything coming out of it. I've never seen, uh, exhaust coming out of it. Maybe that's just wrong timing on my part, but.
I haven't, I've paid attention to that especially because I was here for, when they were here and then at the planning and zoning and, uh, I think it was the easements as well. And I voiced my opinion because I knew what, what my father had gone through with the gypsum mills in Fort Dodge with smoke stacks and everything else and the emissions readings and what, even what the DOT did because they were putting steam out and it went across the road and it impacted visibility. And just brought what he had told me in a short period of time as far as velocity and stack height and how it all affects one, one to the other. And I got, well, I don't know. The engineers didn't tell me. And they ended up still going through and approving it because they needed to get their, their line online or whatever. But, and the understanding that I had from those meetings was they were going to take everything that they learned from that new taller stack and they were going to apply it to the shorter stack if it, if it indeed deferred the smell. But I've never seen the stack operational. I don't know if it's online or not or, and then they also told us that it's two different processes. Well, if it's two different processes, you can't compare apples to apples because the second process is going to be different than the original process. And here we are, a year late, two years later. And we don't have any feedback. We don't know anything. And on top of an odor issue, we have a dump issue. We have several issues from one facility in the, in the community that is impact, realistically, I mean, we're not blind, it's impacting our tax base because why would you want to live in Cresco when it smells? Why would you want to, you know, there's, there's a lot to it, but.
I, I find myself in the odd position of actually defending them. My perception is that there are fewer odors closer to, closer to the south. I don't know about particulate matter. That was a huge issue and I think we would have to talk to somebody like Kathy McCarville because it was right around Steve's house that it was the worst.
And, yeah, Mark Kissinger's.
Mark Kissinger's.
Where they would get, you know, like coatings of yellow stuff. I think that would be an important question. Unfortunately, I think the price for clearing up a little odor in sort of the medium distance is I get a lot more of it at my house. So I think the stack must be operating, um, but I don't know that for sure.
So if a stack, if you, the, the simple breakdown is, is a stack serves as a velocity chamber. It comes up, the taller the stack, the wider the umbrella. If you don't increase the, the velocity of the blower motor in order to push it out into the atmosphere where you have crosswinds to carry it out and disperse it before it hits the ground, a taller stack, all it's going to do is increase that, that umbrella area. If you use a shorter stack, it, it rises up, it collapses down. Well, if you go up higher with the stack, you have the same velocity going up, but then it just comes down and it, and the umbrella goes and it spreads out even further. So without increasing the velocity, you no longer, you're, a stack is just a, it's, it's something to make you feel good without increasing velocity. So you blow it up higher into the atmosphere so it carries away with crosswinds and it disperses. It's not going to do anything.
I think it's time to get representation here and start answering some questions. And like I said, I just had two text messages sitting here because the wind's out south tonight.
Complaining about the smell or what?
Complaining about smell.
Okay.
Where physically are the water?
What's that?
Where are they located?
They're going to be located several blocks south of me and I'm by the blue water tower there.
I know where you are.
And, you know, there's times that I can go to the end of the block down on, by the stop sign down to the east of me and not smell nothing, but as I go back up the hill to the top of the water tower, you can't sit on your deck.
Yeah, see, that's what leads me to believe that the stack is pushing it further away from them.
But this goes back, I've had this problem since.
Okay, you see, I didn't used to smell it up in my, and, and it's annoying and occasionally I'll go online and file a complaint, but it's not as bad as the McCarvilles had it. I mean, it was pretty awful.
All, all of them right there.
In the first four blocks or so, that was pretty hideous.
The, the other. It's hard to, to take, to get rid of the, the, you know, the smell, but the particulates, that's a bag filter. And if they're not changing that, you know, every so often.
I think we have not heard the complaints lately.
I think it got better when they did something a couple of years ago. And I think Mark Kissinger mentioned that. If you see him, you can ask him, but I think that's gotten better. It might be nonexistent, maybe.
Quite honestly, it's conception with people out there is that there's nothing they can do, so they just quit complaining.
I know.
But they are complaining yet, you know? I mean, that's the one.
They're complaining, but they're not filing complaints.
Yes. And that's the one thing, my three months that I've been on here, that's the one I've heard the most of.
So keep telling them to go online because I go right to CFT.
Yep, we get a copy and they do too.
And then we, then we're not always the bad guy.
Yeah.
Because when these people just complain to us and CFT thinks it's just council.
Yeah, it's not that easy.
So they need to get bombarded with complaints.
That form works really well.
Yeah. We need, we need good neighbors.
So that's stuff to consider for the water sewer.
Yes.
And we'll talk about that next meeting?
Yep. Is everybody good with that? I think I'm.
All right. All right. Uh, number 10, update on front desk users.
So when we switched to front desk, um, we had some problems in the beginning, so then we quit using them. And then it came to light that for security reasons, we really needed to be on front desk, so we went back to it. It has improved quite a bit. They took a lot of our complaints and they actually addressed them and made it a better system. So it is working fairly decent. So what we need to do is we need to encourage people to use the front desk. Right now we have 344 people that log in and actively use it. There are like 978 accounts that are set up on automatic pay. So that's kind of like our old system, but now it runs through the front desk. So, um, those are payments that we don't have to process. We press a button and they all get posted automatically on the 11th. But what happened was we lost some users when we switched to this front desk because everybody that was getting emailed bills, um, they have to log in to front desk and verify their email address. Otherwise it switched to them all back to paper copies. So we're trying very hard to get people to sign back up and just verify, all they have to do is verify their email address when we send them the, um, email. And then what happens then is once we cut the, the bills, it immediately emails you how much your bill is. So I've got one of our accounts set up. So I get an email immediately, says I owe $25 due on the 12th of the month. And then I get a reminder because I'm on automatic payment that, okay, it's like the 9th or, I don't know, whatever date it says, reminder, we're going to pull this $25 on the 11th and then it's done. So I don't even have to log in. I have the ability to log in and look at my account and look at the past and all the other fun stuff on there, but, um, you don't have to. It's still just a super simple email, but people aren't doing that. People haven't followed through. So we're mailing more bills now than we had been, so we kind of took a step backwards. But the program's a lot better, so we need people to get excited about it again and get signed up. So I guess I just wanted to promote it.
I was one of the, I'm on it. I have both ACH and I get my bill electronically and it is, I just don't know why you wouldn't be on it if you're, if you can handle your email. It, it comes, it pays itself. Nikki doesn't have to send a bill. She doesn't have to process. I think all of us as an example should be on both auto pay and electronic bills.
Have been for a long time.
Yeah.
So, okay.
That's good, so.
Well, I tried to be, but I've had nothing but issues trying to log into it.
You have to do it from your house because the hospital has a firewall.
I tried it on my phone too and I couldn't get it to work with my email address, but I mean, maybe I need to just have Nikki show me.
I, I had issues and I emailed Nikki and she got me straightened out right away. So I, I, it said that I had an account that I couldn't log in or some, or the password wasn't valid or something like that. And I, I emailed Nikki and she worked her magic in the background and.
Okay.
Is there a link, uh, easy to find on our website?
Right on our website.
On the, like, front page or?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Do you remember what increased the numbers last time?
I'm sorry?
Remember what increased our numbers last time?
I know. I'm not giving you any more Cresco Javer bucks. No, don't. Unfortunately, we did that. We got all these people to sign up and then we switched the program and lost some of them. So.
Give them money.
We're almost there.
Get some COVID. 10 bucks will make them do anything. Do we need a motion to go into closed session or do we just go into closed session?
Nope, we need a motion.
So we're going to close the public hearing or the public meeting right now and go into a closed session?